Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 3, 2022 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. I hope everyone's doing well this evening. First up, we don't, we don't have minutes on the agenda tonight, so we'll defer that, I guess, till next time. First up is the consent agenda, and there are two items. The first is for AFP-9364-2022-8331, construction of a new single-family detached building at 8331 Cottage Hill Court in the R6 medium-density residential zone. That's an amendment to the final site plan. And the second item on the consent agenda is AFP-9365-2022, approval for relocation of project feature sign for Rio in the mixed-use development zone, and that's an amendment to the final site plan. Any questions for staff on the consent agenda?
I have a question on the AFP-9364. Just noticed that the building with vinyl siding, is that something that we had discussed many times about vinyl siding? And is that allowable still within the, within the city?
Yeah, it's an allowable building, Joe, and it was approved by the ECA.
It was approved by the ECA, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. Any other questions on the agenda?
I think you need to note that I'm alternate voting tonight.
That's right. Okay, so for the record.
Chair, come on.
Sharon Tral is participating as a full member, and not all the regular members are present. Thanks for that reminder, so the record will be straightened out on that. All right, if there are no other questions on the consent agenda, is our motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda. The two items on the consent agenda is written to the record.
Second? It's been moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up, presented from staff, is Jasmine Forbes for a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for BOA-9229-2022, amendment to special exception for a telecommunications facility on the parking garage roof at 430 Allied Place in the MXD mixed-use development zone, against a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. So this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for amendment to special exception application BOA-9229-2022. The applicant's requesting amendment to special exception for a telecommunications facility on the parking garage roof at 430 Allied Place, which is also known as the Hidden Creek Apartments, pursuant to Section 24-160D.3D. Telecommunications facilities are allowed by special exception in the MXD zone. On June 13, 2018, the Board reveals granted approval for special exception application BOA-7814-2018 for the construction of the rooftop telecommunications facilities. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-188D, which requires all petitions for special exceptions to be referred to the planning commission for recommendation. And I will have the applicant lead, Duget, from Avantage Engineers, do the presentation this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So it's at the Hidden Creek Apartments on 430 Allied Place. So this is the current coverage map. As you can see in where this is, which is right here, where, yeah. And so you see, as it currently is, to the northeast of there, like up toward, like going like by Mid-County Highway, the signal strength is weak. Those light green colors are, you know, just really not acceptable for the coverage that we need. And even the, you know, more moderate green, you know, not so good. So we really need to upgrade this area, and there's very limited options over here. And then this is what the proposal will do, very much increase the coverage directly around the Hidden Creek Apartments area, up to Mid-County Highway, and then it goes all the way out beyond. Everything gets a lot better in the area. And the work description is pretty straightforward. It's, you know, adding antennas to the existing parking garage and relocating one existing antenna, installing a, you know, eight foot by eight foot by eight foot gamma-sector RF-friendly screen wall. So, and it's not visible at all from the ground, from any angle. And you'll see that in the future pictures. And then other various equipment, equipment cabinets are being added, remote radio heads, et cetera. All the standard things that you would have in a T-Mobile project. And so this is a view of the parking garage. Both the aerial view, you can see, so the parking garage is in the upper part of the property here. And then you can see on the parking garage itself, there's, there's two sectors. So there's the one up in the northeast part of the roof plan here, and that's, you know, we're, you know, adding a steel platform in there, and the, and then also on the southwest corner, that's where the RF-friendly screen wall is. But you cannot see it from the street whatsoever, anywhere, any vantage point. So this is the elevation. So you see the south elevation and the east elevation. So if you're looking from the south, so you're looking from like where there's a 7-Eleven there, so you're looking from the south, and you're not going to be able to, to see anything from the ground. Now, you know, the building itself, it's there, but it's hidden. It's hidden behind, you know, your vantage point from the ground. And then from the east, you can see that there's the, you know, the screen wall and everything else, but again, you're not able to see it from the ground. And this is photosim, the existing view, and then the, you know, the view, the proposed view. So that's what it looks like from, from the parking garage. So you see that there's a little bit on the parking garage, but from the ground, you can't see. And then here's a view from the ground, and the existing view, top right, and then the main view, it's exactly the same. And that's from the street there. This is from the side where the 7-Eleven is, on the south side, and it's, you know, just to the, just to the left of the, the left side of the parking garage. And you see, you're not able to see it from that vantage point. And then this side is from the east, and, you know, there's trees there, but you're not able to see, even if you're on the street, you can't see it from this angle. And then this side is the north side, I believe. But again, you can't see, oh, it's the west view here, but you can't see from there. This is the side from Goshen Road, and that's it.
Go back, two pictures, please.
Okay.
Right there. So you said it can't be seen, but isn't that what the little enclosure is sticking up kind of to the right of the tree, right to the right portion of the picture underneath the existing view?
You can see the parapet of the existing.
Yeah, let me see.
Is that, is that what we're looking at there, or is that something else already?
I think that is actually something else, and you can actually see that in the existing view today.
All right.
Yep.
And then utilities, any utilities running to this new tower, they're all internally, nothing runs down.
Just internal utilities, and, you know, we're not adding a generator or anything like that.
No, no, what I'm getting is you haven't, you don't need to run conduit or anything down the outside of the building to, to service this?
No, no, it's not any new surface. It's the, what's existing is they were not changing any of that. It's more the antennas, the RHs, and equipment cabinets.
All right. Is that for the presentation?
That's it. If you have any other questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Greg, do you want to tell me if anybody's looking to?
We have no attendees on.
Okay. So if you're watching, and you want to comment on this application, hurry up and log in or call in, and let me, because it is a public hearing opportunity, I guess I should ask the tech team to run our video for instructions in case somebody's watching. So can you, sorry for the quick, quick notice, but if you can pull it up and do it, that would be helpful. And if you can't, send a signal from the booth somehow. Hang on a second. If you're connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press a star nine. Okay, great. Thank you. And is there anyone here in person that would like to comment on this application? So I think there's no one jumping up out of their chairs to do that. So with that, Jasmine, go ahead and do the recommendation, if it flees, and Greg, keep an eye on them. Thanks.
Okay, so staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings, and recommendations, recommend approval of special exception BOA-9229-2022 with four conditions.
Great, thanks. All right, I don't see any concerns here. Anybody have any worries about moving this forward? Okay. So the recommendation is that we recommend approval with the four conditions to the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings, and recommendations, move that the planning commission recommend approval of special exception BOA-9229-2022 with four conditions is written into the record.
Second? It's moved in the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is a public hearing. This is a little unusual. We're going to get the initial public hearing on the record for this application. We're not being asked to make findings or move this forward yet tonight, it's just a hearing. So I'm setting this up as Caroline's side, and I'll let you read this into the record and explain where we are in the process, please.
Yeah. Good evening. This is a public hearing on amendment to schematic development plan ASDP-9328-2022. The applicant, Christopher Smith of Stonebridge Associates, submitted the application on June 7, 2022. The applicant is requesting an amendment to schematic development plan approval for the purpose of amending condition number 14 and the parking ratio of SDP-07002 prior to the development of a Phase II lab office building. And this is the current aerial. You can see the subject property is 7.39 acre lot. It is currently improved with a 200 square foot office building shown here. This is 9711 Washingtonian Boulevard, surface parking and a parking garage, which is the gray structure here. It is part of the Washingtonian South portion of the Rio-Washingtonian Center, west of the lake, and it is bounded by I-270 to the northeast, Washingtonian Boulevard to the west, and Fields Road to the south, and kind of an exit ramp from 270 into the Washingtonian area. The property was annexed into the city of Gaithersburg as part of the Washingtonian Center Annexation Application X159 on July 9, 1991, by the mayor and city council. At the time of annexation, the property was owned mixed-use development, or MXD. The subject property received schematic development plan approval, SDP-07009, in October 2007, which permitted up to 400,000 square feet of office uses in two eight-story office buildings and associated structured parking. Subsequent to the development of Phase I, which is the building that is there, an amendment to SDP, ASDP-7423-2016, was approved, converting approximately 4,000 square feet of that office building to educational use. This application comes before the planning commission as a public hearing pursuant to Section 24-198C of the City Code. Following the courtesy review that was presented to the mayor and city council on July 5, 2022, the council directed staff to have the amendment be referred to the planning commission for public hearing and final action. The hearing was duly advertised in the July 14 and July 21, 2022 issues of The Washington Post on the city website, and the property was properly posted with signage. At the present time, there are 17 exhibits in the record file, and all exhibits are referenced in the exhibit list. All of the individual exhibits may be reviewed during the course of the meeting on the city's web page or at the Planning and Code Administration Office during regular business hours. Any objections to any exhibits should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, the exhibits will be deemed received in evidence. And tonight, to present the application, is Christopher Smith of Stonebridge Associates, and Matt Gordon is here representing Stonebridge as well. So I will turn it over, I'm going to go back one slide, that's the beginning of your presentation.
Okay. Thank you, good evening.
Evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present this very exciting project that we have coming before you today. So as--
The project or the parking waiver?
Sorry, the parking waiver. I'm going to go through a lot tonight. I think we will be in front of you several times over the next couple of weeks, specifically on this site. We have a lot of plans for this, for this development site, and we're really excited to be working with staff and the city to accomplish our vision here. So we are calling this project Evolution Labs at Washingtonian. As Caroline mentioned, this is Phase II of the planned development at 9711 Washingtonian. I'm going to skip some of these slides, I think we've covered most of this stuff already. As Caroline mentioned, the, the current SDP contemplates two essentially identical eight-story office building, or office towers of about 200,000 square feet. In November of last, I'm sorry, in December of last year, we, we processed a minor site plan amendment to change the architecture of the second building, which is not built, which is right here, to be a 150,000 square foot, six-story, purpose-built lab, research and development project. So that was approved in December, and as Caroline mentioned, what we are discussing today is an associated request for a parking waiver and a modification, modification to condition 14 on the current SDP, SDP plan. So I'm providing here, just to give you a little bit more context on the project and what we're trying to accomplish. So the building on the left is the proposed 150,000 square foot speculative lab life science building. Architecturally, we are planning to essentially match the existing building to create a life science campus here on the project site. All right, so into the, into the meat of the discussion tonight. So the proposed parking waiver, the city zoning ordinance identifies bio-science lab and research and development as in office use. Therefore, under this current, under the city zoning ordinance, the office parking ratio would apply to this project. That would be one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. And looking at neighboring jurisdictions, a distinct parking ratio is defined for this type of use. Looking at Montgomery County and the city of Rockville, both those jurisdictions specify that, you know, bio-science, research and development, they call it a little bit different term, but essentially the same thing, that they park those projects at 1.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet, which translates to one space per 666 square feet of gross floor area. In addition to that, when you're looking at how, you know, scientists, researchers use these buildings, typically in a, in their office space, they have a traditional desk workstation, but then they'll also be assigned a space, like a lab bench space in the, you know, where they're actually conducting their research and, you know, doing the meat of what they do. Since we are designing this building to accommodate 50% lab space and 50% traditional office space, we feel it's appropriate then to modify the parking ratio to essentially be, you know, more or less half of what would be required for a traditional office building. So that's kind of, that's how we came to the determination that 1.5 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, or one per 666, would be the appropriate parking ratio for this lab, life science building. So with that adjusted parking ratio, we've provided here what the, what the parking table would be. This site currently, the parking is shared between the two adjacent properties, parcel J to the north, which is the Spring Hill Suites, and parcel A to the south, which consists of a small vet clinic. On the current SDP, the parking calculation includes all three uses, and they shared, you know, a reduction for shared use calculation on the cover sheet. So using the 1.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet, or one per 666, the, the parking demand on the site would be 1,021 parking spaces. That's how we came up with that number. I'm going to go back to this one for a minute if we can. So with, currently on the site, there is 916 parking spaces built on the site. That includes the surface parking lot, the parking on the two adjacent parcels, because it is all considered, you know, kind of one campus from a, from a parking calculation standpoint, and the existing parking structure. So that creates essentially a deficit of 105 parking spaces on the site. The current SDP contemplates an expansion of the parking structure, which on the SDP is called the Phase II expansion of the parking structure. That on this, on the image in front of you is identified in the red, the red shaded area. That red shaded area would contain about 600 parking spaces, if fully built out, under, per the current approved SDP. Since we only, assuming the parking waiver is granted, we would only need an additional 105 spaces, we would not, you know, there would be no need, therefore, to build the five levels of structured parking expansion, which was contemplated under the original SDP. We would only need 105 spaces, which we could accommodate within the hatched area, the red area on the plan. So what we are proposing as part of this SDP amendment would be to, you know, provide that 105 spaces as surface spaces within that parking expansion area. I'd like to maybe go back for a second if I can. So as it relates to the condition 14, condition 14 on the current SDP says that we need to essentially build this parking expansion with the construction and occupancy of the second building. So again, that second building is the planned 9713, which we will now, you know, we're proposing to be a secular lab project. We are seeking that, that, that condition to be modified to give us a little bit of flexibility here. Obviously, we don't want to overbuild the parking garage, but also, we're switched back, sorry, my slides are a little out of order. We believe that there's opportunity on this site to provide a third, a third building. We have been in discussions with staff and to amend the annexation agreement and the SCET plan for this area, to provide for an additional, you know, approximately 120,000 square feet of additional density on the site, to provide another life science building, which on the image in front of you would sit roughly in that blue area identified on the plan. With that building, we would obviously need to provide adequate parking to support that third building, which would, which we would plan to expand the parking garage as originally anticipated, five levels up in the green area identified on this sheet in front of The phasing that we're requesting within the condition, within the revised condition 14, basically, we're asking for the flexibility to not build the surface parking immediately with the construction of the Phase II building, to give us time and flexibility to amend the annexation agreement, to provide the additional density on the site, go through the SDP and site plan amendment process for this third building, you know, and provide, get, you know, go through the administrative process to get all the approvals required to build that third building. This condition, this modification of the condition would allow us to continue the development of 9713, which we're planning to, you know, hopefully be under construction at the end of the year for that building. We can continue construction and development of that building while we are going through the administrative process for this, for the third building in the parking garage. The last item I want to talk about, I understand from the prior approvals, there was some discussion regarding the architectural finish, or the temporary condition, I guess, of the parking garage as it currently stands today. There's several images on your screen right there. Image number four, which is the center one at the top, that is a current aerial of the parking garage, shows it's in its current condition. You know, we acknowledge that that is not, that was not the envision, that that would be the permanent condition of that parking garage. It is visible from 270. So in the event that we do not proceed with the third building on the site, you know, we are proposing that we would architecturally finish this parking garage within two years of occupancy of, of the Phase II building. So we're asking for a little bit of time to continue the administrative process, you know, secure the additional density related to that third building. If that does not move forward, we're proposing to architecturally finish this parking garage by essentially infilling, you know, the openings in the precast structure and painting that to match the existing precast members. So, you know, our intent is for that to look as a complete kind of uniform facade, and that has been rendered there on the up-left, top-left corner image there on the screen. So with that, I understand that was kind of a lot, there are a lot of information there. I'm sure you guys have plenty of questions. You know, Matt Gordon and I are obviously here to answer any, any questions you may have with the, with our proposed provision in parking waiver.
Okay. Thank you. Going back to the original, sort of the reason for doing this, you said, I think, that this new build, this, the second building would be speculative, but purpose-built for lab, office, for biotech space. So the way the building will be configured precludes a density in office use that, you know, say a company walked in and said, I'd like to lease this from you tomorrow, but they would double the occupancy and go back to more conventional office space use, or whatever that's, whatever that is today. I mean, it's probably a different, different model, but, and, and then digging you back for the, for the parking capacity. That wouldn't happen because physically, you're building this, you're purpose-building this building for a lab space, right?
That's correct.
Even without a designated tenant, or at least a locked-down tenant, right?
That is correct. We are committed to moving forward with construction without a tenant in place. That's correct.
But the, but the building would be configured to, to be what you're talking about and--
Yes.
--produce the parking, parking lot.
I'd, that's, I'm just worried you're putting words in his mouth, I'm not sure that's right.
Oh?
So 22-foot bay doesn't make a difference from a 25-foot bay, other than how big your furniture is, right?
Fair enough.
So you're purpose-built, so there's a little extra money and time and effort that goes into, you know, conforming it to a biotech use, but it doesn't preclude you, you know, jam an office user in there.
Yeah, but, but this is no different than any other use that's approved as part of a SCET plan with an assumed, you know, you can, you can take retail and turn it into office space.
It's a good question for staff, do we have a use that, that we could specify?
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't have a distinct use defined as lab. I think if someone came in with an office use and tried to get a use in occupancy that was not an office lab, they'd have to come back. We couldn't approve that without going through some parking analysis and requiring some additional--
But our code hasn't given you any sort of, it's a subjective, to some extent.
Yeah, I think at the moment.
Well, all right, take that one step further. So, so the applicant nicely, you know, showed precedent in other jurisdictions for what this is, for how the parking is calculated, and a use that's specific. Is that something that's not echoed in our own zoning ordinance, our own--
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
We don't have a distinct parking ratio, and I think we've been through this with other buildings before you. Anytime we have a lab use, we have, they, they come and request a parking--
Let me ask it a different way.
--a change in the parking ratio, because we don't have it in our--
Okay, let me ask it a different way. If, if we were to approve something like this, could we have a condition that it's for this, would the use be defined somewhere where we could use that as a--
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Cool. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, are you looking at single tenant?
I'd love for it to be a single tenant.
That is, yes.
Are you looking for a high-paying single tenant?
Yes, that'd be a good one, please, yeah. Somewhere away.
Interesting. I just had a quick question. For, for, I guess for, for you, for staff, but just, so what's the enforcement mechanism two years out from, you know, substantial completion for the garage?
Well, they, they would have bond--
Bond, okay.
--and that they, and that's a good question.
It's a long bond.
Yeah.
But, but I'm happy to hear it. Something, you know, kind of something twists an arm.
My question is one for staff, I want to make sure we're all clear, exactly, exactly what that we've seen tonight is part of this specific amendment. Is it just because we've seen parking, we've seen potential future phasing with potential footprints, we've seen a potential architecture for a facade of a garage that may or may not be there in three years from now? So like, what we're voting on, or not voting on, but what we're discussing tonight--
So--
It's a very good question.
It's a very, it's a good question.
Well, high-paying tenant.
Single tenant.
This amendment to schematic development plan is solely related to changing the condition of the original SDP and changing the parking ratio. At the same time that they're going through this process, they have submitted an amendment to-- they have submitted an amendment to final plan that will detail, there are some change, site changes and the laying out the parking lot to our code requirements. I think their, the building actually, because the changes to the facade were so minor, they actually did receive a staff approval for that already. But I think there are maybe some other minor modifications that is all rolled up into the fourth, into the new amendment to final plan. So our, what we're planning to do is come back in September with a recommendation on the amendment to schematic development plan that you're hearing tonight and approval for the amendment to final plan. And do that, and then you'll see more, more of the detail of the parking lot and some other site changes.
So it's really because the building itself, physical building itself, was able to be approved, that we need to rush this parking waiver so that they can start, they can put it in.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna see the amendment to final plan at the same time that you would make a, make a decision on the amendment to schematic development plan in September.
We're not actually voting on this.
Right, we're gonna have the rendered held of.
I'm sorry.
Right, and then you do all of it together in September.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So on the parking calculation, and I know it necessarily includes the hotel and the veterinary hospital next door, but as an operational thing, do you control all of that? Or does each, do each tenant or each use control? By that, I mean, you know, to the extent that this puts more pressure on the adjacent parking areas, if it becomes fully leased and, you know, active, are there, are there ways that those businesses can protect some of their own parking? Or do you have control of the whole thing and you do that for them? Or how does that all work out operationally?
So there's a operational covenant that kind of governs our relationship between all three of the parties. I would have to go back and look at the specifics to be able to answer that.
But there is something in place that would allow management of that. I don't need to know the terms or even how you would do it. But the point is, it wouldn't be the wild old west out there, people gunning for parking, but to be able to organize that and manage it if necessary.
That's correct. There is a structure in place. I'm just, I'm not prepared to speak on that.
Perfect. That's all I wanted you to know. Good. Any other questions? I'm gonna, Greg, we, this is a hearing, right? So keep an eye on the, on the outside.
We do have one attendee who's joined since the last time we did the announcements. We may want to run the video again.
Okay. So let's do this. Let me do this in the right order. Let's go ahead and run the announcement again. Tech team, please run the instructions for dialing in for a hearing.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, great. Now while we see if anything happens from that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Again, seeing no one there. Greg, do we hear anybody with hands up online?
We do not have anyone with their hands up currently, but I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, thanks. All right, so with that, and since we're only doing a public hearing, we don't have any comment. Caroline, what's the, what's the next step?
So staff is making a recommendation to hold the record open until 5:00 PM on August 24th, 2022, which is 21 days from now, with a final action on September 7.
Okay, great. And so we don't really have discussion tonight. We're just sort of waiting to hear it. And to reiterate, if anybody is watching or listening to this, maybe even on the recording of this later on, you heard the date for the deadline to get comment. And please, please send emails or letters or however you want to contact staff on this if you have any concerns. I have one request for how this plays out. And I'd like to get on the record your management framework for the parking across all three uses. And some, I mean, I guess you could give staff the actual legal covenant, but maybe more of a narrative on how that would play out if we have issues with the pressure on service parking from the adjacent uses. And we'll limit, of course, our discussion to just the parking calculation and the revised SDP condition. We won't worry about things like the proper for facade treatments on the garage and things like that. We'll worry about that later. But I do want to make sure I understand how the parking is managed, if there's any issues.
But all I was gonna say is, if, if the next time we discuss this, we're talking about an amendment to final site plan and this amendment to schematic development plan concurrently and the final site plan, I'm assuming is, might have some of this extra stuff we're seeing tonight. So I actually, I look at staff like, I'm assuming it will be a more holistic conversation when we have the next two.
All right, any other concern?
Well, if we want to discuss specifically the parking issue, just get it on, you know.
Oh, yes. What is that?
Well, just the, if the parking ratio is at all an issue, I'm, I'm excited to see in the city us building parking spaces to the use rather than to the code. So I'm, I'm excited to see a, you know, 667 kind of parking ratio for these kind of uses. There's a lot of empty garage spaces on this end of, you know, on the outer end of a lot of these pieces. If you could take those pieces and put them in the middle of Rio, that'd be great. But we can't. So we're, I think it's wonderful that we're looking at these holistically. Whether that's the right number or not, we'll have to see SDP, I guess. But, but just in terms of building, you know, garage and service parking especially, with garage spaces to the use rather than to the zoning code is excellent. And I think the intent of AMXD zones, so.
Good. All right. Any other concerns, questions? All right, staff has recommended that we make a motion to hold the record open until 5:00 PM on August 24th, 2022, with anticipated final action for the ASDP along with an amendment to final site plan tentatively scheduled for September 7th, 2022.
So moved.
It's been moved and sectioned. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Our record is open until 5:00 PM on August 24th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great to see some work on the, on the site.
Yes.
All right. That takes us to our site plan agenda. We have one of those tonight for SP-9217-2022. A 6,139-square-foot convenience retail with drive-through and automobile filling station at 751 Progress Way in the MXD mixed-use development zone. This is for the final site plan and presenting again for staff is Caroline Sidon. I think we're about to hit for a hat-trick on continuing to score sites here.
You're right. That's exactly right. Hat-trick.
Caroline, please.
Good evening again. This is final site plan review, SP-9217-2022, submitted by John Eiburger of Sheets Incorporated on March 3rd, 2022. This is the third and final site plan anticipated to fulfill schematic development plan SDP 8597-2020, which is outlined in purple on the aerial, which was approved by the mayor and council on March 15th, 2021 by Resolution R1521. The subject property, which is outlined in the blue, is located at 751 Progress Way and is part of the 43.96-acre matton redevelopment of 700 North Frederick Avenue. Property is bounded by Progress Way, which is, doesn't show up on the aerial, but it's southwest of the site. Bunson Place to the southeast over here. And Flask Place is, will be here to the northwest and North Frederick Avenue along the top. The applicant is requesting approval for a 6,139-square-foot Sheets convenience retail store, associated parking lot, a drive-through and an automobile filling station. And here tonight to present for the team is Philip Hummel of Miles and Stockbridge. So I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Philip Hummel of Miles and Stockbridge. Our firm represents applicant sheets. As Ms. Sidon mentioned, we're here for a site plan application for a 6,139-square-foot convenience retail store with drive-through facility and automobile filling station with eight double-sided pumps. Sheets is excited to choose the city of Gaithersburg as its location for its first Montgomery County store. So here's a slide showing the team makeup. We have, next to me, on my right, is John Eiburger from Sheets. Our civil engineer in this case is Fika. We have Ian Duke present in chambers tonight. Me, Mr. Hummel from Miles and Stockbridge. And Matten is the owner of the property and Sheets will be the tenant. So here's just a little background on Sheets. I'm sure everyone on the commission is familiar, but in case if you're not, there are more than 650 Sheets locations in six states founded in 1952, over 23,500 employees, and it's consistently recognized by numerous publications as one of the best workplaces. To give you some context of where we are, we are in the northern employment district of the Frederick Avenue corridor. It's home to a wide variety of commercial uses, retail, offices, hotels, and transportation infrastructure. You have 270 right here. And to interchanges, you have the Montgomery Village Avenue interchange to the south and the recently opened Watkins Mill Road interchange to the north. The outline in red is the approximately 44-acre site that was developed by IBM and most recently vacated by Leidos. The site is zoned MXD. It abuts the FedEx distribution warehouse to the northwest at 800 North Frederick Avenue. And in 2019, the mayor and city council approved Matten's sketch plan application to replace the site's existing buildings with up to 650,000 square feet of commercial development and open spaces. And actually, on this aerial, you can see the demolition is underway. And this is actually at a date construction is well underway on the site currently. So the next slide kind of shows the framework of where we've been. In 2021, the mayor and city council approved Matten's schematic development plan application to redevelop the vast majority of the site. The SDP covers 38.89 of the 43.90-acre site. That's about 88% of the 44-acre site with commercial development and open spaces. The approved SDP is to be implemented in phase site plans. The first site plan was for these two flex buildings that you see here. The 1,400-foot-long linear park along the site's Frederick Avenue, North Frederick Avenue frontage, naturalized open space in the rear of the property and the new network of internal streets that you see here. Construction is well underway on the first phase. In October 2021, the planning commission approved the site plan for the Chick-fil-A restaurant here on the corner with the drive-through. Construction is underway on that Phase Two site plan. And as Ms. Sidon mentioned over here for tonight is the third and final site plan to implement the SDP for the Sheets. And here's a rendering that kind of places those site plans into existing conditions. Here are the two flex buildings, the new internal streets, the linear park along the North Frederick Avenue frontage. Here's the Chick-fil-A site plan recently approved. And here is the future Sheets. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Eiburger.
Yes, good evening. My name is John Eiburger, and I'm an engineering permit project manager with Sheets. I want to thank the staff and the city for leading us through the final site plan application. We are very excited to be in front of you tonight, hopefully seeking final site plan approval for the new Sheet site in Gaithersburg. This would be our first site in this area, so we are very excited to be in front of you tonight for final site plan approval. Site plan-wise, a more closer look in. We, the, the street address is 751 Progress Way. It's called Lot One. It's comprised of 1.79 acres. The building that we are showing the site plan is 6,139 square feet. The gas canopy will have eight MVPs underneath for pumping gas, that's 16 fueling stations, eight pumps. There's 41 onsite parking spaces, two motorcycle parking spaces, and four bicycle parking spaces. The site is surfaced by a two-way traffic flow around the whole site for enter and exit. Curb cuts into the site, there'll be one curb cut located off of Flask Place and two located off of Progress Way. And both of those, all three of those curb cuts are enter and exits. There is a patio component to this. It's on the front facade of the building, actually the facade that faces Maryland 355 or North Frederick Avenue. That would be an outdoor patio area and it'll service about 16 Cs plus or minus. There is pedestrian interconnectivity on the site connecting the linear park out in front along North Frederick Avenue through, into the Sheet site and through the Sheet site, carrying down through the site and I'd say exiting out the back across Progress Way to 700 North Frederick's development behind us. So there is great interconnectivity that carries from the linear park through the Sheet site into the development behind the Sheet site too. Let's see. I think that would be it for the site. Next slide, please. Oh, I didn't mention that there is a drive-through component on this site too. So if you could flip to the next site plan, please. This is, this layout is a theoretical stacking plan that we included with our application. It shows the drive-through stack and it stacks 13 vehicles from entry point to exit point. So it shows, it shows the theoretical stacking as you enter. I'd say at the rear behind the fuel canopy, across the back of the Sheets building, and then comes up around the right-hand side of the building. If that, I think that explains it, so. As part of Sheets, looking at the drive-through layout and the site layout, we did closely look at the city's best planning practices for drive-through lanes for conforming with our site plan with drive-through. Before I do that, I would like to just take a step back and discuss three Sheets' drive-through experience. The Sheets' drive-through experience is very different from a fast-food drive-through experience. It's really a new component that Sheets is including on our stores. It's not on every store. We probably have it on about 100 stores right now. The percentage of customers going through Sheets' drive-through is very low. It's at about eight, 8%. It's a very low percentage compared to a quick-service restaurant with drive-through. Their throughput is probably 60 to 65%, so a drastic difference. Our owners of the company, the Sheets family, has determined that it's best to provide a drive-through for our customers for convenience. I'll give you, for example, for Sheets, you have a car full of parents, kids either going to or from school, going to or from a sporting event. We feel the best opportunity for our customer experience is for them to have the ability to enter the drive-through, order their product at the order station. It's not a speaker. You're actually typing in the menu order or the food order or the product order on a screen. And then you can approach the store and pick the product up. Compared to a quick-service restaurant with drive-through, they design their drive-throughs with maximum throughput. You're talking multiple drive-through lanes, multiple order points, speed of service, multiple windows for cash payment and food product. Our experience is very different from that. I'm just trying to differentiate the two. I'm not saying one is better than the other. But the way we offer a drive-through experience would be a much different outlook than what a drive-through experience could be at, at a quick-service restaurant with drive-through. So I just want to kind of differentiate that. So it's a new concept for a, a drive-through component on a, on a Sheet store, but it's something that we're embracing, operationally embracing, and, and we feel it really does add that customer convenience for the customers visiting the Sheet store.
To be clear, there isn't a menu board and order PA and all that stuff out at the beginning of the drive aisle?
There is a menu board. And then there's a kiosk where you're actually, you're not speaking into it. There's no PA system. It's all done, believe it or not. You can type into the keyboard. You can even use your iPhone and type into it too. Yeah, but it's all silent. There's no PA system. But there is a menu board. There is a stanchion where you can see the order on the screen and place it too. But there's no communication with anybody inside the store. So that's very different from other, other drive-throughs that we see with food.
The menu, for lack of a better term, the, what's served via the drive-through? Is it just the made-to-order food? Is it?
Anything you want from inside the store. With the exception of, and we're not, of course, we're not serving alcohol in this store. But if it was a store where anything, with the exception of alcohol and cigarettes, can be purchased from a drive-through.
A bag of ice melt or something.
Yes, you could. Yes, you could. Yeah. So it's, it's unique. It really is unique. So, so I just want to spend some time just trying to explain the differences between drive-throughs, because when you think of drive-throughs, you think of bank drive-throughs, you think of restaurant drive-throughs. Ours is a very different experience. As far as conformance with the city best practice, we did look at that. And we are maintaining, you know, the safe and comfortable pedestrian environment on-site, you know, with efficient stacking on-site and minimizing impacted adjacent uses. We have defined and separated the bicycle and pedestrian amenities from the drive-through. We are accommodating queuing up to 13 vehicles approximately in the drive-through lane, which that is significant for use with the percentage being so low. The parking is separated from the drive-through by curbs. The entry point of the drive-through is located to the rear of the building frontage, and it's separated from the parking by curbs. There's controlled pedestrian access that crosses over the drive-through, but we've controlled that with raised crosswalks and signage to protect that, that intermingling of any drive-through customers with pedestrian customers that need to walk across the drive-through lane. The parking throughout the site is evenly distributed, so it limits interference between the drive-through operations. evenly distributed, so it limits interference between the drive-through operations, and there is a fence around the patio area to separate that from the drive-through, too. So we did pay quite a bit of attention on the conformance for the drive-through standards. Just moving on to building architecture, I'll touch on this. We are planning four-sided architecture on this. The predominant finishes on the outside of the building is brick and cultured stone. Now, getting a little bit deeper into the elevations, the screen that's in front of you, the elevation on the top, we call it our front elevation. It's the elevation that faces the fuel canopy. Couple of highlights on this is at the front, we call it our gateway entry into the store. It's got the little peaked dormered roof above it. That's our focused entry point for customers. We also embellished this elevation a little bit. The last window bay towards the rear, we are, to differentiate the facade, we raised that elevation of the brick above the window, and we're building full-height cultured stone in that, just to break the facade up and meet design standards. The elevation below is called the left elevation. This is the elevation that faces North Frederick Avenue. Again, a feature of this is at the corner, it's our gateway entry with the little peaked dormered roof above it. That's our primary entry point from the outside to inside. This is also the elevation that introduces the patio area in front of the building, too. So we've got a nice variety in that elevation facing the linear park and North Frederick Avenue. The next two sides. So the elevation on the top is, we call this our rear elevation. This is really the elevation that is the drive-through elevation, the elevation that faces Bunson Place, proposed Bunson Place. Again, brick and cultured stone. We have embellished this by adding two faux windows. It's the red-shaded windows, for lack of a better word, with metal canopies above it. And then we've also raised the parapet above those windows to differentiate the facade, so just to kind of break it up with variety. But all the materials are tied in together still. It's just we're trying to break up the facade for more interest along that side elevation. And then the last elevation, we call it the right-side elevation. This is the elevation that faces inwards to the larger building, that Matten's building. This is also, has a pedestrian customer service entry door at the rear. It's defined, and it's called full-height stone wrapping around that, too, to differentiate and highlight the doorway into the building. So that's an outlook on the four elevations. Just stepping along here, we did prepare some renderings of perspectives. This first perspective, this would be a viewpoint looking from the linear park inward to the building and fuel canopy side. It shows the building in perspective. Behind it is Matten's 700 North Frederick's larger building that they're building. And then this also identifies the fuel canopy. I mentioned that we are building the latest design building, proto, I don't want to call it proto, but latest design building for Sheets. The canopy is a new and exciting change for Sheets. You can see it introduces what's called an open web trust system beneath it. It doesn't have awnings that are illuminated. It really brings an architectural prevalence into the canopy. We feel it resonates and carries right on out from the building to the fuel canopy with this change, and we're excited about this change, too. And then the other elevation, this is looking forward from the larger part of the development at 700 North Frederick into the site, across Bunson Place to the Sheet site. This is the side of the building we were embellishing with the added faux windows and raising up the parapet roof lines. As part of putting our whole site plan package together and working with the city, we did really look closely at design guidelines, and, you know, I'll touch base on several of the guidelines that we feel that we've been, we've introduced into the application. So all the tax structures, the fuel canopy, the trash corral enclosure, the drive-through structures, they're all of similar design and complementary materials to the primary building structure. The size of the accessory structures are compatible with the size of the lot where they're placed. The accessory structures are all placed around the site to not impair the primary building, and it doesn't create any adverse effects to the neighboring properties, and none of the accessory structures are located in setbacks. So I do want to thank you for the opportunity to present to the board and the city. At this point, I would like to turn it back to Phil. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Again, I want to personally thank staff for their hard work and attention and response to this case, especially Ms. Sidon and Mr. Mann. The applicant team believes that the site plan application complies with the required findings of Section 24-170A through E of the code for the reasons stated in our statement of justification, which is Exhibit Three in the record and the staff report. The applicant has reviewed the proposed conditions for approval. Applicant consents to those conditions, and we ask that the Planning Commission approve Site Plan SP 9217-2022 as conditioned by staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
Actually, first, I want to say, everyone loves Sheets, and so I'm personally thrilled that you're here. Just want to say that.
Thank you.
Everyone loves Sheets.
Frank, I just need to say, just so it doesn't appear otherwise, we're not biased.
Well, I have no particular. I appreciate it. So that balances it out.
We're going for the high.
It's okay to support the business.
I guess just, everybody knows what Sheets looks like. It's kind of an iconic look. So is this, are design standards really different than the other Sheets that we've seen, like in Pennsylvania or wherever?
There are some differences on the building. We have, I use the word embellished. It may not be the right word, but we introduced added improvements to the building facades that we wouldn't put on the standard Sheets, on both the side of the building that faces the fuel canopy and the drive-through, too. So there are added features. The patio area that we're introducing, that is typically something that we wouldn't have on the Sheets. We do have outdoor seating, but the scope and magnitude and the embellishment, if I can use that word, we have really looked at the importance of an outdoor patio here for the pedestrian interconnectivity and the excitement and the vibrancy of what's going on with the site and marketplace, too. So there are improvements, what I would call above and beyond quote-unquote prototype Sheets. Yes, yes. I hope that answers your question.
And I see here the drive-through. There are two, I guess, menu boards or two stacking cars in this picture. How long, I mean, is that person going to have to wait for the person in front of them to go before they can go?
Yeah. So there's a pull-around. So there's two windows, and it's not, you don't pay at one window and move to the next window. Both those windows are used to service customers. So what we've designed is we've designed widening, kind of making the drive-through lane wider around those two windows. So if somebody picks their food up at the second window to the rear, they can drive around the car at the first window if they're waiting there, and then get around them and continue on with their. So it's not to stop the drive-through flow, it's to keep them moving. Our drive-through percentages are very low. I would suggest that you're never going to see that amount of cars stacking the drive-through lane, but I could be wrong. But it's just, it's a very low volume. Sometimes you go by our drive-throughs, you may not see anybody there. So the chances of, there may be peak times during the day where somebody needs to pull around, but we think it's just going to flow consistently, and it's probably just going to be going through one window, too, because our volumes are so low in our drive-throughs. So I hope that answers your question.
I had one question, and it relates to the pedestrian connectivity out to the linear park.
Yes.
Explain to us, if you can, why we have that candy cane-shaped path when we've got a sidewalk that comes straight out and really just wants to keep going straight out to the curb. I'm assuming there's a good reason.
Yeah. I just... It's psych grades. There would have been several series of steps that would end up reduced, probably one set of steps elevating, a level area, and another set of steps. And we are really trying to make this an integrated, easy move of access from the pedestrian sidewalk, from the linear park through to the Sheets, and we were concerned if we introduced stairs, several sets of stairs. It's a trip hazard. It's a maintenance issue. If it's slippery, trip and falls, we just really wanted to keep that flush. And when we worked the grades out that are out there, really had to take that S-shaped turn from there.
Without jumping the gun and getting too much into discussion, I think that is something, when you look at the access into the linear park from the, you know, public sidewalk, the true sidewalk out along 355, that sidewalk comes into a landscape element, and if that, you know, sidewalk that's part of Matten's work kept going straight through, it would pretty much hit your crosswalk in the parking lot dead-on.
Right.
That is, to me, a massive missed opportunity. It's, you know, just from a, for the people who are walking along Street 55 and want to get to Sheets, they're going to be going through the landscaping.
Yeah, or, I mean, the geometry is such that where their front door is more aligned with where the little switchback comes in anyway. I mean, probably the crosswalk ought to move down to meet it because that's where the front door is. But anyway.
Right. One of the two.
Yeah. Raise the bridge or lower the... Okay, who's got anything here? You asked the question.
Several questions, actually. Let me go back to the stacking, the cars in the drive-through. You've got 11 spots to the right of that that are available, and you've got, it looks like a crosswalk in front of where the cars stack up, the two cars, one past the other. Is there any kind of barrier between going back to those 11 spaces to prevent somebody from just dashing across into the traffic, into that stacking? Or is it just, is it all open, those 11 spots? Is there a wall or any kind of barrier that would force the pedestrian or someone cutting out of a car to go to the crosswalk?
The drive-through is curved on both sides. So, you know, it would be hard for, if I'm understanding the question, tell me if I'm not answering correctly. It's curved on both sides. It's going to stop people from just dashing in and kind of butting the line, basically, if that's what the question is. It really becomes a defined lane.
Walking to get out of the car.
Oh, walking.
Walking to get out of the car, and they want to get into Sheets, or they go into the picnic area, the outdoor area. They only have that one walk area.
Yeah, and we have raised and elevated that as an elevated, so just a differential to know that the cars, the differential will cause them to take a moment before people are walking across. Plus, we are assigning that, too, for pedestrian crosswalks, too.
But from the pedestrian standpoint, you've got landscaping and shrubs. I think, I think the concern that Lloyd was trying to get to was, I park at the space page south, the last space under the tree, and I want to get into Sheets. Depending on what that landscaping is, I'm just going to walk through the grass and cut across the drive-through at the fastest spot. Like, is there something to keep people from short?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk and a fence that directs people. I'm sorry, I was just not understanding the question. There's a fence and a sidewalk that direct people up to that crosswalk.
That's the answer.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
With respect to two other issues. One is, you've got the canopy over the filling stations, and you've got a, looks like a really nice flat roof. Any ideas of using it for solar panels?
That has been investigated inside of Sheets. Honestly, we want to do that. There's a lot of payback on that. The payback right now is 15 years, and with the changing technology, we just feel everything is not caught up to do that. It's a great place to put it. The technology is just not there, and it would be, you know, an investment for something that it just probably wouldn't reach reality at this point. At some point in the future, when the technology really starts to come together, absolutely, but it's something that our company has looked at very closely.
And speaking of technology...
Yes.
There aren't any EV chargers anywhere.
Yes, that's another very good point. We are open to that. We don't, as Sheets, honestly, we don't control the EV charging stations when they're placed. It's a third-party company.
Right.
They base on it on where the marketplace has gaps and where it needs to be filled. If an EV charging station company came up to us and said we want to put them there, we would do it right away. But right now, we don't have that mechanism to do it. We have the real estate, we have the parking spaces. We're just waiting for a third-party vendor to say we'd like to place them there, and by all means, we would be open to do that. It could happen that quickly. It's just not there right now at this point, unfortunately.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, a quick one. So when we get to discussion, we should talk about the crosswalk or whatever. But then, tell us more about the sign for the gas numbers. It's out, sort of facing the westbound.
Yeah, we're trying to put, locate that in the best spot. We're going to have one monument sign. Right now, it's going to be going at what I would call, I wish it was north-south on this, I apologize, but it's going to be at the front corner between, the front corner of the property that connects the right-of-way line along North Frederick and Bunson Place. There's a curb radius there. There's a very small box. We're going to locate the fuel pricing station there. We are planning to orient it so people driving effectively north of North Frederick can see it, and as they're making a turn in. But there's some, there's some location challenges where to place this because of the conforming shape. We don't think we can get two signs. We would love to get one on both corners, but there's very limited frontage with the development. There's very limited places to put it right now. So we could, we're showing it on that corner. We're orienting towards Bunson. It doesn't need to go that way. It could go perpendicular, but we're just trying to get the best. We have to advertise pricing. It's law, and we're just trying to figure the best spot to put it on areas that there's limited spots to put it, basically, for visibility. We're open to locate it some other place, but right now, from our lens looking at, we think that's the best spot.
No, I think we're looking for you to put it in the best place, too. I just don't quite know what it is, either.
Sure.
But, you know, and I just, you know, our great linear park is what it is. I realize there's an ordinance to fulfill here to put the signage up, but I don't quite get why it would be there as opposed to over on the Flask Place side, but I'm not sure I have a strong argument on the Flask Place. It just, it feels like one of those things that ought to have a rationale to it, and I don't know what it is.
Okay. More questions?
Just one more. So did I miss that there are bike racks?
Yes, there's going to be bike racks. They're located, yeah, if you, I think Phil is trying to point to it. It's, you could say it's at the rear corner of the building, but there is a customer entry door back there. It's a small, it's hard to see on the plan, but there is a place for four bike parking spaces on that back corner right there.
Right here.
And just to Commissioner Hopkins' point, one rationale perhaps for this signage location being there is, this is the signalized intersection here.
Correct.
Flask Place is not.
Yeah, I was, I probably didn't do a good job explaining that, and I apologize.
Yes, the northbound cars are going to look across, you know, a couple hundred feet.
While you have that plan up, are you controlling it from there, or is the tech team doing?
Yeah, we're doing it.
Can you zoom in down on the, through the bottom left of this plan, so to the left of the canopy where the gas pumps?
Zoom in.
Well, it's just above that dumpster enclosure. What is going on there?
Those are the fuel tanks.
No, no, further down the corner.
Right, just about, yeah, right in there.
Those are the underground fuel tanks to service, yeah.
And the different coloring, I believe, is that this is concrete...
It's concrete.
And this is asphalt.
Those little filled portals or whatever, where they have to...
Yeah, those are surface portals, and they're on the ground. There's three underground storage tanks, and those are portals to put the product into the ground, or to the tanks, I should say, not the ground. I apologize for that. Yes. And then there's going to be a vent stack there that's sistered upright against the trash corral for venting it. So it's kind of, I don't want to call it utility, or the site, but it's kind of where the trash compound and the fuel is all going to be placed in that corner, just for, you know, best placing on the site.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay.
And then I just want to raise one other point related to the location of the connection to the linear park. This was an issue that we closely reviewed with staff. This was located specifically to avoid impacts on the trees that will be planted. And as Mr. Eitberger mentioned, there is considerable grade here, which you can't really see on this plan because this plan doesn't include grades. That was also something that was definitely taken into consideration, and this location with staff's coordination was agreed upon to be the best way to connect.
We'll probably add more discussion to that, and since there's nothing planted and nothing final graded yet, I'm not sure any of that matters, but we can get into that on the discussion. But thanks for the clarification. Any other questions for the, okay. So let's, one more time, play the, tech team, let's play the instructions on dialing in and testifying, please, if anybody's interested.
Good evening. If you connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press a star nine.
All right, great. So we're keeping on...
We do have one hand raised, Susie Ward.
Okay. And then I will also ask if anybody in the audience wants to testify on this. We'll queue that up as well. Any protocol for starting online or starting in person these days? What's the...
We prefer in-person first and then virtual, but either way is fine.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? I'm seeing folks sitting in the back row, but they're not jumping up to give a public speech. All right, well, let's, if we have one hand raised online, let's go ahead and get them connected up.
I believe she may be unmuted.
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Okay. Don't hear anything yet.
Hi, I'm Susie Ward, and I live in Deer Park in Gaithersburg. I think that you probably answered this question, but I didn't actually hear the answer. So there's two windows you, a person would order at the first one and then pick up their food at the second one? Or where do you pick your food up?
Okay. Well, we can answer. Any other comment or questions for the applicant?
Yes. Is there any place to eat inside of the restaurant?
Yes, there is. Yeah, there's seating inside.
Okay. And also, I'm just wondering what the composition of the underground tanks is?
They are double wo...
Real quick.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead and finish your comment and questions, and then we'll get to the answers all at one time. Go ahead and finish your comment and questions and then we'll get to the answers all at one, at one time, sorry.
Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, please. So, the last one was the composition of the underground storage tanks.
Yeah, they, it's a double walled. I don't want, I want to use the word fiberglass, but it's kind of a polymer-based, double-walled underground storage tanks. And then there's a brine system that is in between both the walls and that's used for monitoring leaks. So, it's a double-walled system for double protection. And then we put a brine system in between and that, that is our, it's a very sensitive mechanism for, for monitoring leaks if it ever happens right now.
Okay, great. And then the first question was the configuration of the windows for ordering and pickup, how that works?
Yeah, so there's no ordering at the windows. There is an order kiosk when you enter at the rear drive-through lane. It's not right when you enter, there's some stacking behind it. But you would enter the drive-through lane and pretty much right where the radius where Phil Homel is showing it. I apologize if the, if the individual online can't see it. But it's the, the order point is several feet behind the building. And then as you pull towards the bend, pull towards the building, there's two windows. Those windows are just to serve product out. And the reason why there's two windows is customer convenience. If somebody pulls to the first window and they have a larger order, we can still serve product out of the second window. And the customers can drive around and then keep, stop the stacking from backing up basically and keep throughput. So, there's no separation of cash payment. There's no ordering, it's just serving product out of both windows, so.
I think we're all going to have to experience this once to understand exactly how this works. So, it'd be great. All right, Greg, anybody else online?
Nobody else.
No one else in the audience? So, I think with that, Caroline, if you would do the recommendation, please.
As staff recommends of the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant SP 9217 2022, amendment to final plan approval. Sorry, it's final plan, it's final site plan approval, finding it in compliance with sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions that are included in your package.
All right, great. Let's organize our discussion around site plan and then building architecture if there's any concerns either. But let's start with the site plan. Anybody want to jump in on their first or?
Go with the crosswalk.
Start with the crosswalk.
Okay.
Good. You raised it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, without seeing the detailed grading for the linear park, it's a little bit hard to picket this, you know, beyond what you've, what you've told us. So, you know, if, if, if the grading for the linear park, which has yet to be built, is that set in stone that it can't be adjusted to make a better connection, then, you know, the path you've shown makes sense. I would, I would, I would question a little bit, like, how, how set in stone is it?
So, I'll just follow up with what John was saying. Really, the, the doors are at either end of the front facade of the building, right? And if you move that crosswalk, which I guess makes some sense to be symmetrically centered on the building and you've got the little break in the planning and I get, I get why it's there. But if you slid that over to, you know, second to last space there at the front of the store, you'd have much more aligned and maybe even be able to get the grade to tweak to have them aligned so that you could actually come up that path and walk directly across, across walk. You know, it looks good in plan, right? It's a, it's an engineer's fantasy, right? So, it's, so it's, it looks good in plan, but probably wants to line up with your front door anyway. You're not having to rearrange your planters or anything like that. It really just kind of lines up with your walk so that as you take your lunch and walk down the park, you can come right up and get, get your sandwich and go like.
Just one other consideration on the connection. I understand, again, based on grading, this is ADA compliant that we're showing? If it stares, I'm.
No, no.
Nobody's up.
You wouldn't move the path. Look at the crosswalk that leaves, that's right in the middle of the parking spaces. Just slide that to the left and make the, make the connection line up with the, I mean, you have to adjust the corner there a little bit where the planting island is. But the point is, it would be one shot out the door, up across the street, up the sidewalk.
Yeah, one other consideration though is, it's a domino effect because there's also, there's also a requirement for internal landscaping for the parking lot. And I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Again, we're not talking about replacing any landscaping or that island.
You're just shifting parking spaces around with the access aisle.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because we're tight on that figure.
Yeah, we're sure. It's just a, yeah.
And I get that there's a little bit of a ramp there too at the end of the, and the crosswalks. I mean, you still can't have them lined up perfectly, but at least it's, it feels like you're respecting the pedestrian.
I'm sure it's something that we could look at. I mean, at face value, I think it makes sense, but, you know, with this being so tight on landscaping, there may be a yet but. But to me, I think it makes sense to align everything.
I would encourage you and staff to, if Matten.
Absolutely.
If there's any reasons from Matten, say, look, that'd be reasonable, right? I mean, let's not take it at face value because none of that stuff is there yet. I mean, they're still doing rough grading, right?
I'll just add that there, it's a forest conservation area also, so that was also something we.
But again, we're not, we're not changing quantities, we're just shifting them around a little bit.
Sliding that crosswalk over will actually save you 40 feet of sidewalk. It'll give you, it'll give you 40 feet of green space back.
It does.
Credit to the concrete line on the budget.
$4,132 contribution to the city.
With that too, I also want to suggest that the crosswalk is more than just a, you know, a basic painted stripe there that you do something with the surface to, again, encourage slowing down cars if someone's trying to cross there or when they're crossing, they know it's legitimately a crosswalk that's protected and not just a.
Yeah, I love the detail that where, you know, in the drive aisle, in the window drive, service aisle, whatever you want to call it, that they actually ramp up there and it's just a really well-done detail. And, and you know, you shouldn't need to have full speed because you're tearing around this corner. So, maybe you take that same detail and pull it up and then see now you can spend that $4,000 on the, on the raised bump. But really, what we're after is obviously the respect for the pedestrian and I know that this is a swerve and condition. I know we're relatively isolated, but we're still trying to show as much respect to the pedestrian as we do to cars. And this doesn't quite do it.
Yeah, anything else on the site plan?
My only thought is, or my only other sort of point of discussion is back to the EV charging question. Totally understand the point that they're third-party, it's based on, yes, a third-party vendor's market demand studies and all that. My problem is looking at this site plan, I don't know where you would put them with all of the transformers and inverters and infrastructure that goes with fast charging. You don't have the space because there's a drive-through there. So, I, I think, you know.
There's some logistical challenges that we need to go through and look at the, where would you place them?
There is currently not a city zoning requirement for them or for the provision for them. God willing, that'll change in the next five years. I will say, in my limited EV experience, I picked my breakfast joint on my road trip based on which one I could plug the EV I'd rented into. Out of one of you and one of each of your competitors, one of them had EVs and that's where I brought, bought my, my breakfast. And so, I think that's going to be a, a thing that, you know, it would be good to see at a minimum a dash box on the plan that says inverters here, charging stations here, when they come. So, that's my concern is that with this site plan, absent ripping out the patio or ripping out the drive-through or doing something like that, there's no way we're ever going to get EV charging on this site, even if somebody did want to put it in.
And to that point, with this plan doesn't show there are all the utilities which kind of create other conflicts. Also worth mentioning, I believe Matten's Phase 1 site plan does include EV spaces. So, I believe there's an intent to provide EV within the overall redevelopment of the site.
Yeah, I'll, I'll represent, since I've had an EV for 14 years.
Okay.
That I'm not quite as concerned about it. But I think, I think it's coming whether you want it to or not and you're going to have to dig up a piece and put them in later on in order to track, you know, even though you're selling gas.
We are trying to figure it out day by day right now.
Yeah, yeah, I think business will drive it. To, you know, to Phil's point that, you know, I'm not going to shop here unless I can plug in just for sheer ego sake. But it, but I think, but I think in the electrical retrofit and whatever it is, I don't want to predict it now. Like, so whatever it ends up being, like, I don't really know. So, I don't, I don't think we, in my opinion, I don't think we need to put it on a plan now because it's just going to be in the wrong place or wherever it is. So, conflict with the utilities, that's not, that's not.
The wireless thing too, right, where you just have to pass.
Yeah, yeah, you just, you'll have to, it'll be a little fence because you're going to walk through it. But, but my, my next concern is, is landscape though. I think there's some bald spots on this, on this head. Then we ought to figure out a way to sort of, you know, if it is enough, it's enough. But there's really, there's some corners, some entries, you know, that aren't, aren't planted, right? And lawn and turf, you know, it still requires maintenance, kind of is what it is. And frankly, it's not as attractive as, as, you know, something that's planted. So, I'm not quite sure why even from a business standpoint, say, but the, you know, the Flask Place corner or the other corner, why, why they aren't planted.
So, I will just note on this site plan, there are some trees that are ghosted out. Like, there are street trees that will be located along Bunson. There's like planted on the corner here, some landscaping and also the street trees along Progress Way. Those just aren't rendered in this site plan and of course, the linear park.
And we chose to ghost those just because we're trying to, you know. It's, it's, we could have shown them rendered in for a good picture, but we really wanted to look at our site plan, basically. Some of that is what Matten is planning outside. And it is, to Phil's point, it is all coasted in. We could color them in just for rendering if you want to see it, but it does represent.
Inside your property, let me be more specific, inside your property line, there's, there's four corners to your property line, right? Really, none of them have any landscaping on them. There's one tree on one corner and there's nothing below it, right? So, for me, it's an, it's sort of, it's oversighted to some, some exception. When you actually get out there to the real world, you're going to have dirt, half-grass underneath that one tree in the one corner. The other three corners have just grass on them. It just seems like a lost opportunity to put a little bit of planting, less maintenance, more attractive and a little less water and fertilizer and all that other fun stuff. So, I don't quite know why they're empty. I get what you're saying, outside the property line, there's something else out there. Matten's doing something like, I'm talking about inside your property line, there's four corners, entry corners to your property. They don't have any planting on them. One corner has a tree and the other corner has planting, sorry. So, three corners. I, I don't, I'm not saying it's conditioned to approval, I'm saying it's, I don't, I don't quite get it, I don't understand.
Your comment about less maintenance raised a follow-up question in my mind that has very little to do with our approval, but is, I can't help but asking it. Who's mowing the grass here and are they going to stop at the property line and someone else from Matten is going to mow the grass on the other side of the property line? Like, you have so little green space? Like, how does the maintenance of that relate to the maintenance of all this other great landscaping around you? Is there an agreement in place?
So, I'm sure that there's an agreement in place. I can't speak towards that, I haven't seen an agreement, but I will tell you how Sheets operates. We're going to treat this as our whole site and we're not going to say that our property line is there. We're going to look curb to curb because it's a reflection of our brand and our image. If we have to go beyond that property line out the curb lines, we will take care of that. We will, we will mow probably more than a lot of other people, yeah. And, and, and what this plan doesn't reflect is that we are irrigating too. So, there will be an irrigation system on this site to, to make sure everything stays green. But we, we do look beyond, we're not going to stop at our property lines because it's a reflection of our brand and our image.
And I do believe there will be a covenant between Sheets and Matten as the overall owner.
So, getting into a little of the detail that on the north, plan northwest corner, so the entrance off of Flask Place and the, and the empty corner that's up there, no, no, into your site. Yeah, right there, yeah. So, there's a little diagonal hash there, is that a sign of some kind?
Flagpole.
Flagpole, okay. So, again, another opportunity.
There's a lot light there too, yeah, there's a flagpole and a lot light. And, and a, and a ground mount of light for the flag. So, there's a couple of things going on in that corner.
Okay. So, again, an opportunity to add some seasonal planting, do something to soften where all those poles come into the ground. And that's probably a good place to do because it enters the site. Bottom left corner where you have the dumpster enclosure and the tree, the tree's probably going to be a stick for the next 10 years until it kind of comes in and matures. So, in the meantime, again, another opportunity to run planning around the enclosure and kind of soften what that looks like. The upper right-hand corner, you're talking about being the location for the reader board for pricing, right?
For the sign.
So, you're going to sort out what that needs to do. But once it's done, again, you know, look at any service station around, around this area and they will soften that whole base with something, you know, with a.
Come down into something.
And that's our intent too as part of the sign permit application.
Yeah, actually, and I'll add that we require monument signs to include a landscape plan around the monument sign. So, there will be landscaping there, it's just, it would come in with the sign permit.
So, it's one of the three corners come in with a sign permit.
Right.
So, why not do it now? So, but, and I think we could, I could leave it up to staff.
Yeah, I would, I would say, review the, the landscape.
Yeah, it's, it's just an oversight, I think. It doesn't look purposeful at all.
Oh, go ahead.
A question about the lighting.
Yes.
The canopy lighting, I assume, is going to be the primary lighting for the entire area? Or are you going to have lighting off the building? Is there going to be, are there going to be stanchions with lights? What's the lighting plan?
There's lot lights on the site, pretty much wrapping around our perimeter. The lighting underneath the canopy, it's LED directional lighting, so it's really focused under the canopy. It doesn't spill beyond it. There are some, what I would call architectural lighting that will go around the building pad. It's not high, they're, they're small baller lighting. And then there's some architectural lighting that will go in the building too. So, the canopy illumination does, the LED lights is directed down in the canopy area and then the lot lights will fill in around it. The, we have a lighting plan, it was a comprehensive laid-out plan. It integrated all that together.
Is Sheets a 24/7 operation?
Yes, it is.
So, the lights will be on 24, well, during the evening hours?
During the evening hours, yes, it would.
Okay, good, thank you.
I can pull up the lighting plan.
I had a, okay, I had one more question on this site plan and I meant to ask it earlier and it just occurred to me, I forgot to get to it. If you look at the upper right-hand corner of this plan, where the, sort of you're exiting the drive-through service, the, the curb lines imply that you're forcing a right turn only out of there, is that right?
Yeah, we had a lot of conversations with the staff on that and that's what we agreed to have the traffic to help control traffic movements on the site. We kind of arrived at an agreement to have the traffic make that right turn out, come down, what I would call the drive-through side to left side till you reach the Progress Way and then figure out how to get back Maryland 355. We were trying to, you know, the, the intent was to not, hopefully not mix the drive-through traffic with the fueling traffic and turning movement. So, we wanted to direct it in one direction, that's what we agreed to with staff.
Right, and to John's point, we worked that with both planning staff and DPWs.
Yes.
Okay. You think it'll work?
As a businessman? I believe free flow for traffic, but I totally understand that, you know, we have, that we have to be, look for safe traffic movements too. Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, I would like to see free flow traffic because when I want to make a left, I want to make a left, when I want to make a right, I make a right. But I understand that we have to be careful with what we're doing here because we're missing pedestrian traffic and different uses of vehicles on the site too.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the intent was to reduce the probability of conflicts.
Yeah.
There is also signage saying right turn. I'm sure it, it is possible for someone to turn left there. It's not a very pronounced right turn because we had issues. We just wanted to make sure of any type of vehicle going through the drive-through could, could make the turn. So, it's not as pronounced as we might have liked it to be to force the right. But it certainly encourages.
I don't need to draw on it, I was just curious. It's part of our best management practices, I would look at.
I've got a couple more thoughts.
Did you have the lighting plan you said?
Yeah.
Well, they have great, they have great, they have a great accent. It's lit with the photometric count, it's really well done. It's pretty, it's very pretty. But I'll, are they going to pull it up for you?
Yeah.
Can you guys?
Or did you want the colored?
So, these are photometrics.
Yeah, if you went to the colored, well, the colored ones are really graphic.
Give her the pretty one, come on.
Yeah.
There it is. Yeah, and then the next one's the accent, right? Or, sorry.
That's actually a good picture that shows the canopy, the lighting underneath it, just a very little bit of.
The next one with the photo foot candle range, go to the next one.
This one?
No, no, one more. Yep, there you go, look at that. Nice. It's pretty.
Our staff was very excited about these too.
We're consulting on a lot of technology.
And obviously, you're balancing the interest of security with not having bleed off the lot. So, I think this does a nice job of balancing that.
It does. Yeah, we're, we're very concerned about security.
I think 60-foot candles is secure. I think the, I think right under that canopy, I think it's secure.
Even nicer.
I think you can get a suntan. Yeah, you're going to have to put on a little, you have to get some lotion on before you go under there because you're going to get a burn. But it's, but I, but I think this is a great exhibit because it really shows the real cutoff piece of the zero, dark blue, the zero piece, but I don't know.
And that's the next thing about LEDs is that it's very, do whatever you want to do with it.
Very good. Okay, any other? Very good. Okay, any other questions?
I'll just add a couple of site plan comments, just to say, you know, I was looking for more holes than I could find. So it, I think this is a great application. I think you really did for, you know, what is often abused typology. This is a really nice, well, well-done site plan. The, you know, the trash around is really well done. I mean, just where it's positioned, how it's built, I think it's really well done. And the drive-through is very interesting, and I think things like the suggestive right turn at the end of it, all those kind of things, the drive, drive around is often ignored by some of your competitors, and I think you have an advantage, because you've done the site plan fairly well, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is well done. So any other concerns with the site plan?
No.
Any other issues?
Thanks for the, thanks for the permeable papers, too.
So I think we have one, and I want to get to the building itself, but I think we have one condition for, to work with staff to get the alignment of the pedestrian access into the park worked out, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So just hold that for a second, and we can read it in a minute. The, the second place I wanted to go was the building itself. Any concerns with the, the architecture, the development of the building itself?
It's attractive.
Very attractive.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
Thank you for the embellishments.
The embellishments.
That's the right word.
I think it's very well done.
Yeah, very attractive.
And all those windows are see-through windows? I mean, they're not just false windows?
All the windows are see-through windows. The only two windows that will not be see-through is the added ones on the drive-through side, because there's nothing to see there, basically. It's just, it's more architectural.
If you go to the elevation, I think it's the page before this one, that's facing toward the, yeah, that one. Just to be clear, and we lament this every time we see a retail building that, that has to merchandise their floor plan as best they can. The window space and the gas pumps are above your head. I mean, you know, you're, you're going to be staring into a, into a blind wall, which is, I think, a function of having to do a store layout, which is unfortunate, that there isn't more glass down closer to the, you know, view in, view out, except at the, at the door. But quite frankly, this is a building that looks very similar to other types of retail buildings that they're dealing with.
We weren't going to name it, but...
And so we know it works, and we know why this is, is the way it is, that there's a lot of glass that gives light to the inside of the building is great, but it, it won't be, it won't be that inside-outside sort of connection that, that is, you would expect on a street-level retail, but that's, that's just part of the, part of the mix. In this elevation, there are the little white dots on the standing seam. I saw there was a little ice dogs that are up there. Is that what that's supposed to show?
Yeah, there are, there are stands, basically, to stop the snow from falling down, and yeah.
So you're metal, you're using hard canopy throughout the whole...
Yes.
...the onyx, which is, which is a nice touch.
That's great, yes.
Yeah, I, I think it looks great, and I think to the extent that this rendering doesn't show up, but to whatever extent things like trash receptacles and incidental, you know, site furniture, whatever those things may be, are, are integrated with the building itself.
Yes, they are. And typically, the pedestrian entry and exit doors, there'll probably be a couple more added in the patio, I think, for that, too. But yeah, they're integrated in the building pad. Same thing with the fuel canopy. At every, at every NVP, there'll be a fuel, a, a trash compound right there, too.
Good, okay.
There's nice pedestrian-level lighting, too. It's, just, well done, retail lighting.
Yeah, it really is. Anything else on this, concerns? Okay. So, with that, if there's no other concerns or comment, we're going to add a condition.
We can, yes.
Did you want to add a condition about the landscaping as well?
Or combine it to one. Combine it to one. You know, it's, it's all site-related juggling, so staff to work with, kind of, landscape improvements at the...
And alignment of the pedestrian.
And alignment of the pedestrian, yeah.
And, and I know there was some discussion about raising the crosswalk as well as realigning.
I don't know what the solution is. I'm just saying that there's some, there's some options there to make it more respectful.
Yeah, I wouldn't, my, my recommendation would not make that a condition. That's sort of direction to staff, to when, when you're working on the alignment, it just pay attention to the detail of the crosswalk, whatever makes sense. Because I also, I know you're going to have to look at things like, it's right next to some parking spaces someone has to back out of, so the change in elevation is going to be a challenge, and who knows? I mean, just, but make it, make it as nice as it can be, or as pedestrian-focused as it can be, not just an incidental crosswalk. And I know you will, but that, that would just be the, more of a comment than a condition, I think. So, what we got? One condition that deals with both the landscaping and the patio thing?
Right. It's the third condition.
How does that sound? You got a...
Applicant to work with staff to relocate crosswalk and improve landscaping, site landscaping.
I would just propose one small modification to staff to...
Applicant to work with staff to...
On potential relocation.
Potential.
Because, again, just because of the site, the site physical...
Tell you what, I think we see a pretty strong argument to be made to align the pedestrian pathways to the crosswalk, to the path through the park. If it can't be done, if there's something out there, we'll bring it back for consent, but I don't, I don't, I think there's a, there's, there's improvements to be made there, in one way or another. So it's, it's an alignment question for us, I think.
That sounds great.
And if you, if you end up against a brick wall because something happens, there's, you know, utilities, and some, some, or you can't move a little dirt around, or Matten can't move a little dirt around, just stick it on the agenda for consent, and we'll keep moving.
Because technically, the linear park is subject to a different site plan.
Yeah, it's true. But we're not asking you to touch that necessarily. We're asking to move the crosswalk to align with it.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
But if it happens that where your line is a, is a, you know, a specimen tree that's being moved from China or something, and you need to, I don't know, I'm being facetious, but the point is it's wide open right now, so there's probably nothing really in the way of making that alignment work, because we're not asking you to affect the linear park, we're asking you to affect your, your site.
Understood. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
So potentially, it's rejected.
Right. So we, I just have applicant to work with staff to relocate crosswalk and improve site landscaping.
And the record can point to what all those things are, so that's, that's fine. Okay. Very good. Okay with that, team? All right.
Yes.
Good. All right, if there's no further discussion or concerns, we do have motion, please.
All right, guess what? It's up to me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings, recommendations, move that the Planning Commission grant SP 9217-2022, Amendment to Final, Final Plan Approval, finding it in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-172A of the City Zoning Ordinance, with the three conditions as spread into the record.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If all are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Let the Sheets Wawa Wars begin, right?
Royal Farms. Royal Farms. They've got Royal Farms.
It's actually before you in person as well, as opposed to the Zoom boxes.
Healthy competition is a good thing.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Cars getting charged. I mean, it really makes a lot of sense.
Sit out there on Ice Battery.
Thank you. Three of them that co-sponsor, like, the Kentlands 5K or something.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Everybody should put on the jersey of their preferred team.
Thank you.
Did I have to trick you, right, John?
There'll be one guy who has the 7-Eleven shirt on.
7-Eleven, 612.
Oh, he's that liar.
Yeah, where, where did the local guest teams go? Where'd they go at? They'll start later.
What is that?
The local owners of local guests.
Oh, don't. All right, now, that takes us, that's the end of our site funding agenda. Thanks, Caroline. That takes us to, from the commission, Matt, I'll start at your end.
Nothing for me.
Nothing tonight? Nothing tonight?
Happy birthday, John.
Oh, yeah. Sunday.
Belated.
And I, I have nothing. You want to go?
Yeah, just a couple of items. So the registration for the annual MPCA conference is now open. I sent the email to the obviously commissioners earlier this week. Look through it, let me know if you're interested in attending. As in years past, we've budgeted for two commissioners for the registration of that.
And we're in Frederick this time, right?
Frederick, Maryland.
With them standing, right?
Yes. As of now, it's in person.
Could change.
Yeah. But I guess the good news is it's also an opportunity to go for the day and not necessarily have to commit to being at a rally like it was on the eastern shore or something. So that's a nice, that's potential, too.
Frederick's a nice place.
Yeah.
It's nice to hang out.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Oh, and you sent out an email, but...
Yeah, so the other thing, we have two joint public hearings coming up. The first is on September 6th.
Is that Labor Day?
No, it's after the day.
The day after. It's Tuesday, September 6th.
It's Tuesday, yeah.
And then we have another joint public hearing scheduled for now for September 19th.
Right.
So if you just let me know availability for those.